And any cuts you make, the state will cut as well. Up to fifteen thousand.
They give up to fifteen thousand percent?
Yes, sir.
It's our state aid.
State aid, sir.
The state kind of looks at it as a vote of confidence if your local level funding comes. And we've only lost our state aid one time before, and that was in the recession year of six.
Actually, last time anybody could cut a funding deficit.
And so, at that time, we had to file a waiver saying why it was being cut, so that it didn't look at just a vote of no confidence from our local level that we cut funding. And so, that's what, when I contacted the state department the other day, I asked them about it, and they said, the cuts that you're proposing are too big, you couldn't even do a waiver for that, because there would be nobody to justify. The kind of cuts that we were looking at at first, because we were just trying to, you know, help get to that number until April, until we could see how we could finish the rest of the year. So this will actually be a sixteen thousand dollar cut in addition with our state funding going away, because we get fifteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars, I think thirty-three cents, this next projected year, and we would lose that with the waiver.
Even, you'll lose it for next one month, and then we'll do something with it.
Yes, yes.
So for the year, it's a go.
It's a contract period, and so they'll give us our contracts in September, and we have to have those filled out and sent back in, they're on calendar here. We have to have those filled out and sent back in by the end of December. So, I mean, the library's on the fiscal year, but that contract is on calendar. I mean, I can, I can tell y'all any kind of the expenses you want me to share with you, but basically, we went through, and we cut out, just to look and see, we cut out everything we could cut out, we cut out all books, there would be no book purchases. We cut out all library programs, there would be no library programs. We cut out any excess computers, we cut out everything, and our numbers still came in, our numbers still came in like sixty-eight thousand dollars short.
Is that including the kids' programs during the summer?
Yes, that would be cutting out the brown bag program, that would be cutting out kids' programs, and our numbers still came in about sixty-eight thousand dollars short. But we were still trying to look at a number saying, can we operate off this until April, until we can look at possible budget restoration? So I'm very appreciative that we're now looking at ten thousand dollars, which actually equals twenty-six thousand dollars for us. I will tell you this, we bring, and I have shown these to Alex, just so that we all understand how our budget works. Last year, the city gave us six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It cost us six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars to operate that program. So we brought fifty, forty thousand some odd dollars to the table of our own money. But what you didn't see in our budget was we found another source that helped us, and we put a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in capital improvements into that building that belongs to the city, and we did not come back over here and ask for that. We had to make some ADA updates, our bathrooms had been grandfathered in from nineteen seventy-nine. So we had to update all six public restrooms, we had to add the front door opener. So those were things that we did, because we love the program and we love supporting it however we can. But what I want you to know is, when we come to the table, we're not asking for a full ask. We're bringing, most years, we're bringing well over a hundred thousand dollars to the table, just to meet what it costs to run the building. And I, and I wanted to share this with you too, this is just to give you an idea of how hard we work to not come over here and do a money grab for y'all. In two thousand and six and two thousand and seven, the CDA Silicon Valley gave us six hundred and ten thousand dollars. That's not in your paperwork, that's off my budget, I pulled it out of my folder. We had six hundred and ten thousand dollars in two thousand and six. This year, we're at six hundred and fifty-one thousand. The only difference in that forty-one thousand is in occasional coal, which our employees did not get, our employees did not get step raises. The occasional coal that we might get are the difference in any insurance increases, which we're grateful for. But that's the only thing that accounts for that extra forty-one thousand since two thousand and six. So we are still operating a program at maximum and still giving the community everything they expect, in addition to new services like the hotspots and things like that. But we're trying to find funding sources for them. So, that's what I wanted you to know, we are still operating our two thousand and six expenditures in, in twenty twenty-three. So I do appreciate taking a second look at it and responding to that. But if we, if we don't have budget restoration and we don't get this back, my goal has been not to cut services, not to cut hours, certainly not to cut personnel, because that has to come first and foremost. Because the one thing I want to say, and I want to say it here publicly, I don't think the public cares what model computer that is, they come over there and sit down and retrieve their email off of. I don't think they care what grade that copy machine is, which the last three copy machines we bought, we bought with private money, we didn't ask the city for that. I don't think they care what grade that copy machine is that we make their copies off of. What they do care about is the quality of the service that they get when they come to the library. And our human resources are the main thing that we have in our ballpark, because we have people that get up and come to work, because they love helping the public. And I will tell you, last year alone, they did one-on-one reference interviews with eighteen thousand three hundred and twenty-three people. That's eighteen thousand three hundred and twenty-three people that came through those doors and needed help with something. Sometimes it's, I can't read, I can't fill out a job application, will somebody sit with me? We have one hour time slots, we will allow the librarian to sit with them, they have to schedule it. But we have one hour time slots that we will let the librarian sit with them and help them fill that out. If they run their cell phone in and they don't know how to load their minutes, we help them with that. We help them set up disability hearings online, we help them with their food stamp waivers that they have to print out. We try to help in anywhere that we're asked to help, and I think it's, it's no secret that our building is always available. Whenever anybody calls and wants to use that building, we say, it's yours. If you're a partner with us through the city, yes, we're gonna let you use our building and we're not gonna charge you for it, because we feel like that's a service that we can provide. So we're happy to do those things, but I just wanted you to understand where we are, that we're bringing as much to the table as we can. My pledge is to not cut services, to not cut hours, and to not cut personnel. We're gonna try to get to April and see where we are, and then see what we have to cut past that point if this doesn't come back. And I can't promise it won't be ours at that point.
Ms. Tracy, I got two questions, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Number one, we know you, you apply for certain grants throughout the year. How many of your grants that you can apply for and awarded, how many of those can you offset this ten with, or this sixteen with? Can you offset it some with those grants?
We offset it some with those grants, for example, last year.
And when I, and when I say that, I say that because to help you with what you've just presented, to help you get out of a bind, you can offset it for a little while, then we'll revisit in April, and then we'll see where we're at there.
We try to offset with every grant that comes down the pipe, everything that we can apply for, we try to apply for. But when COVID hit, there were some of the avenues that we had to grant funding that shifted altogether. Some of them shifted from literacy to healthcare, obviously with the COVID situation. So some of those avenues did go away, but we do try to offset with everything that we possibly can. So last year, we had a grant, a COVID grant that we didn't even have to apply for, it came through our public library service, and their goal was to bring up the quality of the computers across libraries statewide. They got a copy of our inventory, and they had a set, a set standard, that if you're operating a computer that is this old, we're wiping it off your inventory, we're gonna replace it, and we were grateful for that. We got forty-seven new computers with that, so that was, that was last year.
Well, some of the directs are specific, you can't just use them.
You can't just use them for anything, they're specific for that particular.
But you could use them for this particular deal, which you may not have to use out of your main appropriation, because you used it for this over here.
Yes, yes, it would save on my computer hardware, and that's why when we looked at this number, and I talked with Alex, we totally took computer hardware out of our number. So, but computer software, we buy seven thousand dollars worth of computer licenses that we have to buy every year to run those computers through public. There are certain things that we have to do on our side, because we do have public, uh, computers being used off the utilities boards network. So the firewall has to be set a certain way, there has to be those protections, so that it doesn't come from our public use side.
So even in April, if we're able to, um, get used or funded, but you still lose that state funding no matter what?
I will still lose the state funding no matter what, yes. So, and we're, you know, I had talked to the state about it, and they told me that I could apply for a waiver and see, but the state board will meet again later in the year. Um, and I saw, I don't know that until.
How much later? Do we know how much later? Do we know how much later in the year?
They were supposed to meet in July, and they couldn't get a form. So they were trying to set it for August, because.
Everything will stay the same until that point.
It will stay the same until that point.
By that time, we hope we have all this squared away, like April.
Okay, because it concerns me, you know, taking from the children of our community.
She just said that wouldn't be any curse.
Oh, I know, but well, but it could, I mean, we're still not guaranteed. And that, that's a huge concern, taking from anybody in our community.
So are we looking to program to, to pressure?
No, we're going to try to take what we have in our budget from now till April and utilize that on the front end.
Okay.
Just like what we're talking about, so that we don't have to cut programs or services. If, and we'll say what happens.
It doesn't change that.
Yeah.
Exactly, yes, yeah, those are the things that would hit us if we did.
Now, that makes, that makes sense.
Yeah, that does make sense.
But that's my, that's my pledge to you right now, is we don't have any intentions of cutting programs, services, or personnel until we get to April and see what we're looking at.
Okay.
Um, but it's like, you know.
And that's called being a good manager like you are. You figure out a way to make it work, and we appreciate you being able to cut and still maintain the library, and that's why you're in the position you're in, because you know how to do that. We thank you very much, and we rely on you a lot, Tracy.
Thank you.
We thank you for making sure our library runs at the highest level that they can run to serve our community and the surrounding areas.
We do the best that we can, but I, I have to say again, sitting here, it's the staff there.
Sure.
And if y'all deal with them, you know, they go above and below for everybody, so I don't want to walk away from this table without y'all hearing that. But again, everything's going up for us too, the cost of our audit, you know, we got our letter too, our audit's going up like the city says.
Yes, sir.
Um, elevator inspections, Johnson control, mandatory fire inspections, building and ground supplies go up, we have six public bathrooms. So all of those things, I mean, we had twenty-five first responders training last week. I'm sure they all used the bathroom two or three times before they left, and that's great, but we have supplies that we have to have.
Right.
So we open our building up to everybody, but we do have to compensate for that through our budget, so thank y'all for everything that y'all put in and the vote of confidence that y'all always have in the library. And I have to say that Tiffany has always been a great liaison for us, because she's always used the library, knows, and made it a point to, to know what we do, and I just appreciate that extra education that you've done through the years, so thank you. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy, for all that you do.
Thank y'all, thank you.
Thanks. Are there any questions from the library?
Not yet, not anymore.
Civil Service Board, Cassie and the mayor are gonna speak to that one?
Jane, HR.
Okay, so with the Civil Service Board, um, you'll look at the, the top line, the regular pay, that's for the members to be paid for every time that they need. As you can see, it has actually come down some. This is the first year that we've been actively participating in this particular budget, so I'm not, I can't really say why that eight thousand number was there in the previous budget, but I have a feeling it's probably related to the upper student agreements that was going on at the time.
Administrative fee, what is that, is that for their secretary?
That is the, uh, Civil Service Board Administrator Richard Ronald.
Okay, that's the one.
You wanna cut that?
No, I just.
Okay, well, you just wondered.
No, you just tried to start from again, no, I just want to know if that was for us, like if somebody was hit, you know, something, I didn't know who it was for.
So, regular pay we did, um, we tried to account for at least maybe one to two. One meeting every other month, they're currently set up for one meeting, a boarder. But of course, you know, that makes it difficult when they're a part of our hiring process, the less they meet, the less often we can continue this process with our hiring. So we tried to make sure there was enough funding in there, and.
We also paid for their administrator, the minstaker, is that, is that the regular pay?
That is the other civil service expense, that's for that secretary, that they.
But that's not for the court reporter person?
No, that's separate.
None of those.
Okay, we don't pay that, I don't think taxpayers should.
The, um, the last one has a significant increase, it's the testing and grading fee, it is significantly higher cost. When we have positions, especially our public safety, those tests cost a significant amount, more so than some of our other positions do. Difference between, you know, a hundred dollars for maybe one test versus three hundred for another, so with the police having several openings, thankfully, some of our, our fire expense is gonna go down, because they've, they've done their promotional things. So it's just trying to, to make sure we have enough for all the vacancies that we have and all the testing expenses required there.
Do we need to, do we need to meet more, um, Cassie, since we're so, since we're struggling and stacking across the board? I mean, is that something we need to?
Yeah, the original request we had put in had eighteen meetings, that would give us once a month, and then six extras as needed. Uh, we did cut that by about half on the expense, just to.
But was that smart, since we're, I mean, we're struggling and stacking?
We can, we can look and see if we need to increase it come April, and we'll use what we need to, and then we may come back to you guys and say, hey, look, this isn't.
In order to not actually, so how many meetings are we gonna have before April? Three, if they're meeting every other month?
Yes.
So can we not cut that until?
And that would be more than enough expense to do everyone else's once a meeting.
The reason they have the meetings is, um, the more meetings they have, I guess the better chance we have of interviewing and trying to get potential employees. So I'm just saying, I understand that we're trying to cut everything, but we don't wanna.
No, no, we don't want to cut ourselves, yeah.
That makes sense, because we're struggling right now, but I mean, I'm.
And this would reasonably, if, if we were to be given some more consideration come April, I mean, we could easily meet once a month for, until April.
That's, I think that's what, that's what we need to, they'll have to interview, test, and all that stuff.
I have a question, is there a vacancy in the Civil Service Board, or has that seat been built?
It's all filled.
So is there's a new member now, who is that?
Uh, Jeanine Crawford.
Who, do you recommend the?
I do.
Okay, that's, I was just curious how that gets filled.
Robin Morris, Buster, is it Dayton's? Hughes, I'm sorry, Buster Hughes and Janine Crawford are our civil service.
We don't have any public safety representation in that board, is there anybody?
They have no issues with this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with the Civil Service Board.
Steve Masher's for Parks and Rec.
All right, Steve, I would just kinda let us know your biggest.
Biggest thing we cut?
The most purple cut.
You know, I'm gonna hand out, yeah. Biggest thing that we cut, we have a position that, um, we just basically agreed not to fill. And then, um, we have an advertising line that with today's social media and stuff, I mean, we've agreed to kinda cut out some major advertising and stuff that we're doing. Um, what I'm handing you now, you know, I know a lot of y'all, and y'all know Parks and Recreation, but I think people have no idea how many services and how many people that we actually, you know, serve in our community, on the amount of full-time employees that we do have. So, top page is just basically numbers for athletics, two full-time employees, we have thirteen hundred and fifty-seven participants this year.
That's one.
You know, I did athletics for twelve years, your average day is nine months out of the year, you get to work at seven-thirty in the morning, you get home at nine, nine-thirty.
Oh, yeah.
So, I don't think there's any cuts whatsoever we can make in athletics.
No.
Parks, um, two full-time employees, they maintain eight parks, they maintain three other properties, including the museum, uh, and two fields in the housing district. Forty-four point one-three acres, we manage with two full-time employees. Seniors, we have one full-time employee, they manage two hundred and seventy-four businesses a week with an average age of seventy-eight. She also manages the, uh, East Alabama Program, um, they prepare and either serve or deliver ninety-one meals a day.
They coordinate with Safe on that, right, for some of the deliveries?
We deliver ninety-one meals a day.
Okay, safe.
There are additional meals that go out through other people.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
She also does chair Zoom over there, which is something new that we've tried to offer for the activity for our seniors in our area. Um, we also teach ceramics, we host clothing classes, painting clubs, card players and stuff every week. Special events, this is the thing I'm most excited about that we've brought to our community. Now, keep in mind, we did not add a full-time employee for special events, we took an existing position, made a slight, very slight pay adjustment for that position. And since we've done that, we've had two concerts in the park, seven feet truck Fridays, family game night, laser night, two movies in the park, with another one that's coming this year, storytimes in the park. All this is done through local partnerships, we get the funding for that through, you know, Herded South and other big community partners to help us with that.
It's a big kid.
We've also helped to host the Chamber of Commerce Fourth of July Concert in the park, we did the, um, concert for that. And with the Christmas lighting, we helped with that, and we did the museum with the Jim Neighbors Birthday Celebration. All this stuff is getting done through Lauren, she's been an awesome addition to our crew. So once again, no additional employees for all those services, we added just simple slight pay increases.
And you also have the Board of Education whenever we need.
Every time anybody calls, like, like Tracy was saying. If, if it's a commu, a city department.
Parks and Rec's always.
Y'all are.
But in return, if I need Ed or if I need Reed, I called Reed yesterday, he had a guy deliver stuff, but we were working on something, Reed's off in fact. So, you know, within the city, we, we've got really, really good departments. J Craig, we have three full-time employees, we handle all our own payroll, accounts payable and receiving, we do all our own cleaning and maintenance. Um, we host gymnastics, karate, baton, exercise classes, we've now started doing craft lessons as well for some of the moms that need something to do in the evenings. We manage four meeting spaces, um, we have a day camp program with over a hundred participants this year, it's the highest number we've ever had. Uh, we have to host the Chamber and the Arts Council Banquets, we have members' job fairs, we have the umpire meetings for our home district, uh, Gideon's, and including today, we have about fifty birthday parties slash family reunions and stuff that we host every year. Lake Howard's another thing that, you know, that's something that we've teamed up with the City of Silicon, it's funded through you guys mostly in the, in the utility world. But out there, we have one full-time employee. This employee maintains ten acres of grass, a fourteen-point-five bike trail, a boat ramp, thirty-two boat slips, and we're currently working on an eighteen-hole disc golf course out there that was funded through the Lake Howard Authority. Um, I spent the better part of the last two days myself out there on tractor bill, those two boxes. And then tennis, we got one full-time employee, he maintains that facility, he teaches about two hundred lessons a month, which basically covers his entire salary. It doesn't really cost the city anything, and he helps with our house for tennis. So I wanted to give y'all a list of all the services and stuff that we provide, because I know you drive through a park, yeah, the parks look better, we've done work, you ride by J Craig, the parking lot's full, but this is where your money's going. Um, I'm probably one of the only departments over the last two years that's appropriation that actually brought to our actual financials, our budget. We can show you where we're down, so we're not saying that they're not, but like, if, if y'all come to us and say we want you to cut more, I want you to help us show us where that should be.
Steve, I'm telling you, like I told the police chief, I know what Parks and Rec provides, I know.
You've held the right.
All the services, I've worked at the Parks and Rec, okay? I thank you for cutting all you could cut and working with us the way that you've worked with us to be a team player, we appreciate you. And to not have to cut any services and still make it work, again, proves that you're a good manager of the Parks and Rec that's going in the right direction.
Thank you for what you do.
I appreciate it, and, and like Chief over there said, you know, there's costs, we don't control them at all. You know, we, we, we're maintaining all these buildings, all these parks, it takes maintenance supplies, it takes uniforms to place for us, it takes fuel for us to cut all these different parts. So hopefully, you know, that everybody gets adjusted, um, and the money does come in, and you have real numbers that you can look at, because, you know, I've heard this problem started about seven years ago. Um, if you do a quick Google search, the increase in inflation is twenty-three point seven-four percent since seven years ago. Our budget meanwhile has only been adjusted thirteen point nine percent, so you see we're already in a deficit in just material costs and stuff like that. And like Tracy said, the library, we don't do step raises, we don't do step raises, I have one employee who maintains this big park out there that we're building things at, he hadn't had a raise in seven years now, so.
We're currently working towards for that.
We're currently working on a pay plan, but, um, over the past seven years, when you're talking about us controlling the things we can control, our employee total payroll increase has only been three percent over seven years. So, we appreciate everything y'all do for us, we'll continue to do everything we can for y'all, and hopefully we can use this and move forward.
Are y'all, Steve, looking at the twenty this year's budget, y'all want to be good to get through the rest of the year?
You ran our last board meeting, we're thirty-four dollars to black, so.
Yeah.
So I promise you that, thirty-four, big Zach, I mean, if nothing majorly increases over the next six months, we will maintain what we've been doing. Obviously, we're not gonna add anything new, we're trying to add new.
But at least until October, so twenty-four kicks in.
But, you know, well, October is when our decrease will kick in. You know, um, Skylar Patterson, who was maintaining the Burma Collins facility over there, has got a position with the Board of Education. Um, so basically, our main cut is not filling that position, that I promise you, if you look at this, we can use help in other areas, for sure. But we're gonna just try to keep maintaining, you know, where we're at, and then, uh, of course, advertising, you know, we try to support other local businesses around here, but it may be something we have to at least back off of, you know, those kinds of contracted things, it's already been signed, but we do do additional things outside that contract that we can back off of.
I don't have any further questions, I think you laid it out there pretty, very quickly.
And to know that there's not going to be any services cut, you're gonna be able to make, that's, that's, that helps a lot, Steve.
We're gonna get on services, but you know, like I said, everything, and, and I know this is a fluid situation, I really appreciate what y'all are doing um, with this reset, I know it's not a this council or this city clerk problem, and hopefully it'll really help the community going forward to, to know exactly what we gotta work with, and we'll start over fresh and look at new numbers to make.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
So we had some appropriations that have asked to come and speak to the council, I'd like to start with those first.
Okay.
Um, those are in your packets in green paper.
Green paper, who we starting with?
We're gonna start with Mr. Brian.
Oh, CDN.
CDN.
Well, um, you know, we haven't been told what our appropriation is.
You can lay it on me.
Before the cuts, sorry, before the cuts, they were asking for sixty-five thousand dollars. After the cuts.
Keep going.
Sorry? No, no. Oh, we had that.
It's like. You want this green case play? You want, you need this?
After cuts, the proposed is twenty thousand, it's in your packet.
So it's a ten thousand dollar cut. Okay, on that, I have to say, first of all, um, this is the most well-organized budget meeting I've ever attended, so kudos. I understand what's taking place.
Yes, sir.
Um, and I understand the need for what we call a great reset, um, for our city. Um, along those lines, though, I will say on our behalf, just to, just so everyone knows for the record, uh, since the restructuring of the CDA, and just signing on with the contract of the next site, that was a big plus for us. We've paid out right at sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars in fees, now that's including their annual fee that we, we pay them for their contract. Uh, but, uh, with that, uh, on any of those contracts, there was no incentive, uh, on those. So we're looking at about a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in tax rec. So, we're looking at about a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in tax re- tax revenue, uh, from that. That, that payout of sixty-nine nine eighty was a one-time payment. So really now, as we enter into year two on those, we're looking at about two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars a year, just on what we've initially accomplished with, uh, the next side of reading.
In return.
Uh, in, in retail tax revenue being generated off of those. Over five years, we're looking at over a million dollars that the CDA is directly, uh, and or indirectly responsible for bringing into our city. Now, in the pipeline of what we have over the next year, we've got ten new retail, and as you know, we just negotiated the MOU for a new eighty-room hotel. So, in the pipeline right now, um, within the next year, based on what we feel very comfortable in saying, we have ten new, uh, candidates that are coming into store. One, of course, we're counting as the Wharf and it'll be opening, uh, next year. Um, the hotel, some other things that we're looking at, some I can't quite make public yet, but, uh, we have a little over inc- after deducting the incentives, uh, most likely by the end of next year, we'll be trending at a little over seven hundred thousand dollars a year in increased tax revenue that we've been directly associated with and generating and having meetings and bringing these, uh, retail centers into our tank. So, I said all that to say this, I appreciate the reason for the cut and I'm a team player. The CDA is a team player. If the police department and the fire department can suck it up and take cutbacks until April, then we're definitely on board. But that doesn't mean we don't kind of feel like the quarterback that just threw the winning touchdown pass. And then when you walk off the field instead of getting patted on the back by the coach, you got kicked in the neck. I mean, that's kind of where we feel, to put it bluntly. We can't put it in a way. So, we're doing our job, but at the same time, to go, to do what this organization is capable of doing, we've got to get in a position that we're allowed to expand. We're rewarded for our efforts. We need a director. We need, uh, we, we need somebody that's going, uh, to the conferences that we can send to the Main Street meetings. We can send to strong town meetings. We can send, uh, to showcase conferences, to show off our, our city. Um, and, and train them up to be able to do the things that need to be done in our community. Because we're, we could be so much more than we are. And, and quite frankly, to keep the pace that I'm keeping on a volunteer basis, there's very few that, that will do it. But I do it because I love our, our community. Uh, so I just want you guys to know, uh, and you know, where we're at, and I can provide you validation on all these on an individual basis and show you where, exactly where these numbers came from. My biggest concern now speaking as a citizen is, uh, why are we here? Why are we having this great reset? And whose responsibility? Because it seems like there's a lot that's not been said.
I agree.
That's all I'm going to say.
And, and as a council speaking, I guess on behalf of the council, as the president, you know, we aren't involved in day-to-day stuff. Some of the stuff, unless it gets brought to our attention, we're not privy to know as far as the knowledge goes. And we getting on and letting on. Where somebody gets, you know, understands.
I mean, you're one of my constituents.
I appreciate that, but the citizens deserve to know.
Yes, the, the taxpaying citizens need a clear answer.
Uh, because it obviously goes back, I mean.
Way before we do those.
We're cleaning up a whole lot of stuff here.
Amen.
I think that, I mean, this young lady has walked into forty cents, I believe. And I don't know all the facts. I'm just reading what I see from the outside. Um, and I, I feel like she's got her hands full and to do what she's doing, I'm, I'm amazed that she's got this much of a grasp on everything up to now.
I agree.
That tells me a lot. Uh, but we do deserve to know.
I think the mayor should, being the executive, you know, uh, the mayor probably should clarify that to the people. What, why, why are we here?
Names need to be called. Names need to be called. Somebody needs to be told something.
We've got a good team that's been built thanks to our staff.
Right.
Everybody like, I get, they made Osgood Center Fest. You're looking at a new form of communication here at City Hall. We're working together. With the benefit of all the people.
It's not new. It's, it's proper. We need to know why it's been improper.
Right. I, I think, you know, it needs to be clarified to the taxpaying citizens because this is their money that we're dealing with. This isn't our money. This is the people that we represent's money. And it needs to be clarified why these cuts have been made. Why wasn't it called before then, you know, wh- what's going on?
But I think you're getting a lot of cooperation.
Oh, absolutely.
Uh, and understanding with, with your service that we're going to reevaluate in, in April. So we're trusting the system that she's, she's putting in place.
We are too, Brian.
Uh, next.
Uh, Dr. Trump from the Board of Education. Sir, are you ready? You know this Board of Education requested nine hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. The proposed cut will bring them to six hundred thousand. And they also, as everybody else, will be reevaluated in April. Do you want to wait for the council president to be right by?
I would.
That way they're going.
Is this salaries? I do have a question. Is, are we, is, was that a request to pay salaries or was that a request for, I mean, just operating expenses? What, what are we looking at?
For what we're, we're asking here from the city is, is really programs and mostly about safety and things of that nature. Not really, not really salaries because of state's.
Right, I know, but I mean, with, are there any bonuses given to administration? Like, does anybody get bonuses in the system?
No.
Okay. I was just curious. Hate to see programs cut though.
What programs are going to be cut?
Now, what programs are going to be cut if, without giving the requested amount?
I've been at the office since seven this morning working on that because my board of presentation is on Tuesday.
Oh.
Uh, so we're. Putting pencil and paper around.
Okay, so we won't really know what programs that would cut if we didn't give the.
We're, we're not going to try and cut anything. We'll just have to cut back.
Gotcha.
He'll be here in just a minute.
No.
No golf day on the.
No, sir.
It goes mine in your planes.
Were you going to provide additional programs if we had given the full requested amount?
Um, there weren't other, not really programs per se, uh, activities.
Activities. Like what kind of activities? I'm sorry, I got kids in the system, so you know.
How about if we wait till the president returns and then we can.
Okay.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Tom, go ahead.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, no worries, no worries. I appreciate the opportunity. Uh, on behalf of the Silicon State School Board of Ed, uh, I want to thank you all for your continued support of education and the support of our system. As, as state allocations continue to decline, the annual appropriation to the school system generates, you know, improved learning environments and opportunities for our students above what we can offer them with what, uh, are allocated by the State Department. Now, you know that, uh, funding allocations many times are specific to what you can spend particular items on, especially when they're coming from the state. Uh, we were discussing briefly before we returned President Fowler, uh, about, uh, programs and, you know, potential cutbacks and things of that nature. Our goal and intention is not to cut any programs or services provided. It's really just the opposite, but we have to do, we will have to pull back just a little bit, right? This upcoming fiscal year, we're faced with several continuing challenges. Unfunded cost of safety upgrades in particular, rising costs in utilities, fuel, uh, continued supply chain issues, and then obviously, um, increasing salaries due to state mandated two percent, uh, raise for FY twenty-four. Now, many times when we're trying to fund different programs or services, we're, we're combining funds from a number of different sources, right? Where if we look at, um, city appropriation, we add the lorm, we look at ESSER funding, we look at, at PSCA, which is some of our constructions, uh, dollars from the state. So a lot of things that we do, uh, have multiple funding sources. So, the benefit of that is that if one funding source is decreased or removed, we still have some funds that, that go into particular categories that allow us to continue to serve those, uh, those populations, uh, maintain those projects and things just at a lesser capacity. As you all are doing right here today, that's what you're doing, right? You're going to continue all those services. You're just going to do it on, with a reduced focus for the time being. Our, on the top goal of the district, under the supportive operations and processes, uh, and this information's on our website, is to provide and maintain safe, secure learning environments and facilities throughout the school system. This is, this is important, uh, because it hits home, right? It, it's a lot of things that are happening in, in, in our country and a lot of events that have occurred, not just recently, but stemming in the last several decades. This is near and dear to my heart, uh, and so I fully support this. And this is a, a particular focus of us as, as, as an organization. I've been in schools or in districts three different times in school violence. That's a correct. Two of those times were with guns in the facility, one was with a knife. The result of that was two student deaths. From the time I was a student to the time I was an administrator, I've had to witness and be a part of those things. That's not something that we want to endure here at Silicon. I get goosebumps thinking about those experiences, but that's, that's my experience and why I fully support those things that we're trying to promote. Here at the district, we are in the process of implementing a new badge program at the high school. That will allow us to track better, uh, our students coming in and out of the facilities as well as extracurricular activities. That's a twenty-five thousand dollar program, uh, with, 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 uh, communication tool for officers and administration and, and those to help protect our, our students. We're looking at an alert system, uh, being implemented district-wide. It's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but then annual service is twenty-five thousand dollars. What that does is it links up, uh, we have alerts and it will alert the first responders. So it's going to take out the middle person. So it's going to take out the nine-one-one call. The city police department is going to be immediately notified of the incident and it takes them directly to the location, not just the school, but the specific location that that alert went to.
Is that the boxes that have been installed in the classroom?
That is.
Okay.
That is called Alpha Alert.
Yeah.
We have them throughout the entire district and.
They're, they're pretty neat actually. I mean, I, I saw it in my child's classroom and I was very impressed with it, so.
Right. We've had them widely. Some are still in the process. Uh, right now, we just met with them this week to add one to Legion Stadium.
Awesome.
That way we have not only inside the schools, but also, you know, the venue for us that, that probably houses the most people.
Right.
Is Legion Stadium and the importance of, of providing security at that level. Metal detectors. Uh, the superintendent said that, uh, you know, she talked and spoke with you all in the past prior to my arrival of adding metal detectors, especially at Legion Stadium. Again, the number of people that visit our events is significant. We are in the process of purchasing five metal detectors in addition to the ones that we already have. Well, how is those at each of the schools, but multiple will be at the high school. They're portable, so we can take them across to the stadium. These are for safety and security there as well. These are things that we're committing to, right, to, to continue to add levels of safety and security for our students. We'll also be adding, um, exterior door alarms, right? We're in the process of, of, uh, PSCA programs of putting secure vestibules in all of our schools. Not sure if everyone's aware. What that'll do is add some additional layer of protection when someone comes in the front of the building. The thought process is, what about all of the rest of the doors? Well, our solution to that is to put alarms on each of doors, those doors as well. So, in, in the situation and evolving where a door was propped open, are doors going to have alarms? Will they continuously sound when those doors are held open for over, you know, any period of time? So we're not going to be able to do that. Our, our, our students and staff aren't going to be able to prop doors open.
Right.
Without that alarm continuously sounding and alerting, uh, administration. So we'll be adding those alarms to every door, in exterior door in the district, right? Think about all the buildings and all the exterior doors and that would be. Uh, we're looking at about a twenty-five thousand dollar cost in that regard. Bouncing back to the metal detectors, we're looking at about a hundred thousand dollars uh, in regards to the purchase of metal detectors. Secure vestibules and entryways that we've discussed is about one point one million dollars on the front side. Not, uh, not looking at any contingencies or anything, but looking at one point one right now there. Uh, we've upgraded our fire alarm systems, uh, to the tune of about eight-five thousand dollars. And adding perimeter fencing, um, to the elementary schools to make sure that all play areas are secured and, and enclosed for students at fine risk and in Valley Elementary. Jumping a little bit back, and I've been jumping around because each one kind of draws up some other thoughts. We're trying to set up, and I know we're getting close to school, we're working on, uh, specific guidelines for entry to all of our athletic events. But going through, uh, metal detectors and having hand lines, implementing clear bag policy, you know, all these things that other districts around us are doing, uh, to help promote and, and, and push security. So, everything that we do in, in that regard, in safety, you know, you're looking at one point five, one point six million dollars that we're looking at spending for, for facilities, for security. And again, those, that's a combination of, of act of lorm, PSCA, uh, city appropriations, ESSER funding, which goes away next year. You know, all these things we're trying to promote and enhance security, again, referencing that first goal of the supportive operations and processes. Did want to talk briefly, uh, about, uh, the rising cost of utilities. Uh, fortunately, they are starting to settle back down. CPI is starting to settle back down a little bit. Uh, but over the course of the last year, we saw highs above eight percent CPI, right? So the cost of goods that was going up. Uh, seeing some bouncing in some utilities, uh, but what we're doing to try and, and look down that path a little bit is to fully implement a phase two of our emergency, our, excuse me, our energy management plan, uh, which ultimately will save us money in the long run, but obviously it costs us a little bit on the front side. So, those are some of the things that we're looking to help combat, uh, the rising cost of energy and utilities. Supply and issue, supply chain issues still come up on a regular basis for us somewhat, and that's really created the, and I'm not telling you anything that you don't, don't already know or aren't aware of, but, you know, many products in the same category now, there are rising costs because, you know, certain vendors can carry them, others don't have them in stock, and so it's the supply and demand, um, that continues to, to draw challenges for supply chain costs continually. Technology upgrades is another key piece that we were looking at, uh, using some appropriations for, um, specifically for new communication systems for our buses and our school buildings. Our current system has monthly, um, and quarterly fees. The new system that we're looking at, uh, eliminates those, but will, will still cost us just under a hundred thousand dollars. And we're working closely with the Silicon Police Department, uh, to work on the same length that they are. They've recently gone to a new communication system. That's the same system that we're going to use with our buses and our, our school buildings. We're also looking at and have been working. We're also looking at and have been working with and, and discussing with Chief Johnson and his team, uh, to secure additional SRAs. As you know, we have, have one full-time SRO in the district, ideally we have one every building, right? And, and so we're working on trying to get to a point where we can get additional coverage at, at all of our facilities, all of our buildings, and, and working in cooperation with, with the city on that. Those are, those are the, the things that, that drew our attention to asking for an increase in our appropriation. From nineteen ninety nine to two thousand nine, the city funded the school system at nine hundred nineteen thousand dollars annually, which was our request this year. Prior to that, funding ranged from eight hundred and forty two thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars all the way to one million four hundred and twenty five thousand one hundred and thirty seven dollars. So that's, you know, reiterating, we, we did ask for nine hundred and nineteen, uh, thousand dollars for funding. We have been funded for the last six years at six hundred and forty three thousand five hundred dollars, with the justification, uh, in, in our ask or request for nine hundred and nineteen stems from really trying to take school security and safety to the level that it needs to in twenty twenty three. Rising costs of fuel and energy, continuing supply chain issues as well as, um, the other things that, that are coming down the pipe and managed by the state that are on the front.
Can you, um, I, I know y'all recently took out some of the Avalor funds to two points of the bill.
Yes.
What else, what is left of that and what y'all done there?
Uh, we had our bid next Thursday, uh, for the high school roof. Uh, our initial proposal was one point three million dollars, that going straight into that, uh, into that replacement. Um, it wasn't on our radar initially, but quickly jumped up as, as any major leak issue would, would come about. Um, the rest of those dollars are gonna cover, a- again, because they're.
Stephanie just said.
Right, right, because of, um, you know, one point oh eight five, one point one on secure vestibules. Every project that we're running into has its advantages and additions, so it's gonna need up some of that there. Uh, we have other, other items, bring that folder with me. But when I, when I presented it to our board, um, we had that four or five million dollar capital improvement needs.
Right.
Right, so that two point five is.
It's gonna be used for that and, you know.
It, it is.
Okay.
That's why we asked for such a large chunk, because what had happened this year? The bidding requirements went from, uh, fifteen thousand to forty thousand, so now we can get a lot more done with local people and we don't have to put all those things, you know, on the bid. At fifteen, now we have a, a mark of forty, which a lot of the smaller projects we can fit in, so now we're, we're expediting, expediting the timeframe with those Avalor dollars, we're ready to get those done. You know, there was quite, quite a gap, I met with Dr. Hubbard this week and we were looking at, uh, the capital, capital improvement plan that we have to submit to the state every September. Um, and, and we looked back a number of years and there was such a gap in what we had done as a district to maintain our facilities. Now we're trying to catch up and a couple of things have allowed us that opportunity. The, the Avalor dollars and the bid requirement changing have now allowed us to really start to tackle some of those things. Because they're starting to get to a point of no return, right? They're almost at the point where we have completely replaced instead of repaired. And that's our goal right now is to really get after the next, probably eighteen to twenty four months while on repairing everything that we can so that we don't get that next wave of, of cost increases that we're already starting to see.
Dr. Tom, I know me and you've had several different conversations, I know you, Dr. Hubbard's worked together, I know you and Dr. Eller has worked together on these. And your numbers guy, you've been a numbers guy a long time, can you make it on that six hundred thousand till April?
Can I make more of that?
Thank you. Yeah, this is, I like to know, like, exactly what's going, what the numbers on the projects are and the potential so we can predict ourselves.
Absolutely.
Going for a full year, you know, that's, that's good to always know and, and have, here never gonna pinpoint the price.
And we've got a million left from the Avalor, right? Cause you can spend a million in some change on the roof of the high school.
Correct, right, that's correct.
Okay.
That's good. Um, has anybody else got anything before we just, whatever?
I think I got most of my questions out of the way in the beginning.
Great, we're, we're glad to have you and I, I enjoy our conversations and the knowledge free of the table, so I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
Thank you all so much.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Sir, the chamber originally requested not to speak, um, I noticed Laura Strickland's in the audience and I think she does wanna speak.
Well, and I just, you know, I'll answer any questions.
You may as well.
Cause she's on the tab for, we talked about seventeen thousand yesterday. Laura, Laura.
And what we'll do is, um, uh, once I learned about this, we will be going and, um, cause obviously we work under a contract of services, um, for our appropriation and so we're going to be working on Monday to place a value on all of the services listed within our contract. And, um, we'll make adjustments as necessary, um, so that we can have a new contract in place by October one, um, as is required. And, uh, we'll just be going through and looking to see, um, I started looking at our, um, internal budget yesterday. Your appropriation does reflect a third of my budget, so it is a crucial amount. Um, but there are opportunities, um, for us to make some adjustments. We will, um, obviously have to put a priority on our business in the industry and our partnerships with them because they are the reason that we exist.
Yes.
Um, you know, we enjoy bringing those quality of life components to the community because we know that that's important. But that's probably where we will have to initially address, um, in our contract specifically with you all is looking at those areas. Because we, we are there to support business and industry and that's in the way of workforce development, um, and, uh, through our educational partners and providing programs to strengthen the workforce and tools within our business and industry. So that's where our priorities will lie.
Good.
Um, but, uh, so we'll just, we're gonna just take a look at it there. We've already looked at making some internal cuts, I will not be cutting my staff.
Okay.
They're important to fulfilling those, um, requirements and, um, duties for our membership, the business and industry. Um, we value our partnerships throughout the community, but there are, you know, there's some partnerships that, you know, might have to be addressed that we will discontinue temporarily or permanently.
Cause I know, you know, like the Christmas open house, the crazy days, all that.
Well, open house will remain because lots of support our business that we don't know.
Right, because of the businesses, but the crazy day, the traditional thing.
But, you know, there are other, um, there's other, you know, we have our Christmas tree lighting, we have Christmas parade, we have fishing derby, we have fireworks.
Right.
And a lot of, we, those are not revenue builders for us, we have people that help us provide
Yes.
opportunities and activities at those events, we don't make any money off of those events.
Right, exactly.
But we actually, if you put in our staff time, we do, requires a lot of staff time to implement those events.
Cause y'all organize those events, I mean, that.
Yeah, and so that's an expense that we will be looking at closely, um, we'll put a value on the different items within our contractor services.
And Laura, since you're here, um, I have a question that maybe, I mean, just would require further, I guess homework, whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah.
But with, with your group, the chamber and the pursuit of the, the Main Street program, I know some of that overlaps with what the CBA does. So, so do you guys talk about this and
We do.
revolve around, you know, how am I gonna do this, is it, do y'all do it already or do we need to not do it, so CBA can do it?
Okay, perfect.
I don't know if the CBA is an event-driven organization.
No.
Um, I don't know that they wanna be event-driven. I think I'll speak to you, hey, you know.
But y'all wouldn't say I'm that, it's a, it's a.
Um, but, uh, so the Main Street program, um, we have been making a financial commitment to that. Um, in fact, Nicole just returned from their state, their annual conference in Huntsville all week. Um, and we talked about, we are right now a designated, I mean, we're not a designated, we're a network community. Um, it is focused on a specific area of town, which is your historical business district, it will be the four blocks of Norton and Broadway. It's very specific in the, the market that it targets and the programs that it divides, it's to bring foot traffic and activity to your downtown business district.
So it wouldn't be event-driven?
It is mainly an event-driven organization because you're creating opportunities to draw that foot traffic. Um, there would be partnerships between that program and the CDA in the ways of recruiting to fill, um, available space in the, in the business district, the downtown business district. And those partnerships, we've been working together in that, we're a partnership with Next Side, we're a partnership with the Industrial Development Authority because fortunately, the chamber still remains relevant and top of mind for business and industry. Um, and when, you know, I use this as an example, when Sims Bar came to town, you know where they came first? They came to the chamber because they wanted to find out what available land was there. We were that connector between business and industry and, and, um, support services. So I immediately picked up the phone, I called Calvin, we hooked them up and in six weeks, we had a contract signed for them to purchase land. So that's, that's the role that we serve, I get calls all the time from particular commercial and retail, um, and they wanna know what's available. You know, what I do, I pick up the phone, I call Brian and I say, hey, I've got this phone call, they're looking to do this, let's see what's available. Um, so that we're that connector and that partner and we do work really well together. And I don't seem.
Just hear you off, Sam.
Yeah, yeah, but I do, um, I will be a proponent for the Main Street program, um, they have a lot of tools and services and support to offer. It's not a, um, it's not a club, it's an investment in the future of your downtown business district. And it brings, it just brings a lot of credibility to your community.
While it's heavily event-driven, it is not for other things, it's event-driven to make your city money. You have to bring money downtown to your, to keep the money here in town going to provide, like people say all the time, what we have to do in Silicon Park and that's what Main Street does to bring money to your downtown to keep people here in town.
Got you.
Okay.
So we'll be working on, um, finding out how, you know, ways to, to, to address the, the deficiency in that funding. Um, but I, I could not be, um, I could not lead our organization and represent our community if I stood there and watched funding given to us but taken away from essential services. And while I think we're essential and we are, we're, we, the city will operate more about us.
Right.
Um, I think we add a lot and we bring a lot to the table in supporting the business, industry and the community at large. But, um, I, I do believe we have some very important decisions to make. And we are a very well-run organization, we have a great team and we will figure this out and make it happen. Um, we are appreciative of your partnership because that's what makes us successful.
We appreciate what you guys do and, and the willingness to play ball with us in this unprecedented time and what we've been thrown into as well, so that, that goes a long way. We, we have to put a, entertain.
All right, any other questions for me?
I don't. Which, which, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, guys, we got Chick-fil-A over there, so what we did was we got the council, department hands, you know, Cassie, all you guys over there. Um, we got some food, so let's grab it and then we'll jump into the next one. Ready, break. Maybe we can break.